So you ready for Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That'll be fine. We'll get to you. All right, I'll call us to order.
Well, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the county we live in and the people that we serve and and for the people in healthy county. We thank you for the snowfall that we got. Might have didn't want it, but we got it. So we thank you for it anyway. And leaders and guidance and directions will make good decisions for the county. And that being said, amen.
Amen.
Happen to go to Tallahassee, you'll hear him say that pledge about dozen times a day and you'll participate whether you like it or not, most of the time. But anyway, that's a good thing to do is pledge that flag and I appreciate getting to do it and honor it. I had a lot of family that served in World War Two in Korea. And they were pretty busy, but we, as we all know, we pretty much do that. But I appreciate everybody coming. And with that, I'll turn, let me read the first one, Mr. Daniels.
All right, first up is approval agenda. If everyone's had a chance to look over that, we do have three additions under section four. Other than that, it's printed.
I make a motion to approve it with you.
Motion in a second to approve. Oh, and flag is raised in the right hand. Thank you. All right, move on.
So first up, under community development is a board exception to the ship program, maximum award amount. Um, so this particular project is the uh, project on Proctor Lane and Grand Ridge. It was a uh, emergency assistance. Once the project was started, it was termed in the roof decking, new water heater and porch railing were necessary to bring the home up to code. Change orders were granted for the additional work, which brought the project expenditures to fifty thousand dollar maximum. Additional work caused unexpected project inspections to be required for a total of six hundred dollars.
So real quick a question.
I got one too. Go ahead.
When we have these additional inspections, who are, is that EPCI that's doing that or is that Alan Biggs? Who's doing the inspections?
Those inspections are done by the ship program inspector and he generally charges two hundred dollars per inspection. So um, it's someone that the ship program retains to do those inspections. So they're in addition to any building inspections that are required.
I have a question. Do we have a policy where when you bid to bid to bid? Or do we recognize that as not being the last bid?
Um, well, it is the bid, but these were unexpected expenses that occurred. And so with the ship program, there's a maximum award that can be given of fifty thousand dollars. And if we can get under that, then we have that money to spend on someone else's home. Um, but in this case, it went, actually took the project amount up to fifty thousand dollars. And it was just the additional inspections that were required because of the additional work that caused it to go over that.
Question. The additional funds that's needed to complete the task, it doesn't exceed the original bid price, does it?
Well, this, there's two different things going on here. So the maximum award includes the inspection costs, which is not part of the actual project, except for inspection purposes. Um, so the actual work that was done didn't exceed the maximum award, but it did exceed the original bid. But there were change orders that were approved that brought it up to that fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, I guess what I'm concerned, I wouldn't want someone to be the lowest bidder and then constantly add on to it. That would be fair to the other folks who are competing.
It doesn't happen all the time. In this case, it was because of things that were not visible during the original walkthrough. And so it was unexpected for these things to have to be done to bring the house up to code, actually.
Let's hear it and move through.
We have a motion in a second, but I have another question before you enter. Thank you. Do we, when we use someone to estimate that? Are they local?
Um, all of our contractors are from the, this area, but they're not all from Jackson County.
Yeah, I find that there. But I, nobody wants a ship program more than me. I admire someone for working with it. I just, I just not in a position to want to waste money. I've worked for the ship program as well. I saved it one time in a Florida legislature that was gone. And not a penny of roses on me, but it's, it's a valuable program, especially for our smaller community. But at the same time, when someone adds a little bit of money to it, it's two, two percent or one percent or a half percent. Looked like somebody could, could, could look at that for a long time before they wanted a change order to make it be more. So do we have a policy that just allows that from happening or do we not?
We don't have a policy that would not allow someone to request a change order.
Yes, ma'am. Would you recommend changing the policy where we would stop it at the grant the amount of money they bid? They gotta take that chance, just like I do when I bid, same way.
Well, in that case, it would prevent us from being able to bring a house up to code like this one because of things that weren't visible or weren't there in the walkthrough. So we do have a walkthrough process where all the contractors come together and walk through the home. And that's where they get the information to submit their bid.
So Kim, you know, based on the, the initial walkthrough, a scope of work is kind of developed. It is put out for the contractors to bid on. And then as you get into it, especially as you start doing some demolition work, are things exposed? Ceilings are taken down, uh, things are exposed that were basically unknown conditions at the time of the bid. And that's what these change orders are, are addressing are unknown conditions.
That's right. And it doesn't happen on every project.
During the initial bid process, are we still allowing for local competitors to get a percentage differential?
I don't think so.
Don't think so.
Were you asking about whether there's a local option bid preference for local?
To give a percentage reduction when they're competing with out of town people.
Don't think we do that.
We, we did at one point.
We used to do that.
Yeah, we did at one point.
Don't, I don't think we do that anymore.
Was there a reason for it not being done?
So we had to stop it. I know um, for anything that we were getting federal funds for, we weren't allowed to utilize that local preference. And the ship funds may ultimately have a federal source. I have to research that a little bit, but I do remember we had that years ago, but not in place now.
What, what type of government or regulation you look at to make sure that whatever their extra they're needing to price is going to be in compliance?
Um, well, this, in this particular case, one of the things was roof decking. So they were doing some work on the roof and didn't know because there was a roof on it, that there was no decking under. It was just a metal roof. They didn't realize there was no decking underneath that. So um, that is one of the extra inspections that came into play here that, that we need the additional funds to pay for was that then our program inspector had to go out and say, yes, you do need roof decking on this in order to bring this house up to code. So is that, is that what you were asking?
Uh, yes, can the inspector, he kind of knows what it should call.
Oh, yeah, he, his trade is building. Yeah, he's in construction.
Is he an inspector separate from our county inspection?
Yes. So he would do an inspection to make sure that it's up to the program standards. And then in a roof situation, the building inspector for the county would go out and make sure that it's up to county standards.
He charges two hundred dollars in inspection, however many he does.
Correct.
Would you recommend that we change the policy, ma'am?
Change the policy for what?
The policy, which they're talking about, about going over the bidding.
Um, I wouldn't because then that would prohibit us from allowing additional work on homes that need additional work that's not visible during the initial walkthrough.
And you had an inspector to inspect it and make a quote for an amount of money to start with it, you know?
We did, yes.
How you?
It's kind of hard to be able to, I mean, somebody comes in here and inspects this floor. I mean, come replace this floor, you don't know what's underneath it. So if you tear this floor up and then come find out you got some seals and all that, that's where that comes in at, I guess. In your case, sir, they didn't go far enough to look up into the attic, I guess you're saying, and see that there wasn't no decking, just stripped probably. Oh, that could have been, been caught, but maybe don't. But that, that's what you're talking about. Something is not seen and once they tear it out, then they gotta do something to fix it back right.
That's correct, yes.
Are we including though on the bids that these are certain kinds of things you need to be aware of before you submit your bid?
Amen.
Uh, well, yes, but that's not going to make someone go in the attic and look to see if there's any roof decking.
Well, I think if they want a job, they need to be pretty comprehensive in inspections. My, my take on it. Because that could just continue on with this item, another item, another item. It could be prohibitive cost wise.
It could be, yes. And we, we've had to deny some change order requests sometimes.
What, what would you do if you're feeling a hole in the ground? Won't ever know. How you? Any more questions?
So I, I think you could consider um, a policy that would only allow for, like in this case, this work has to be done in order for the structure to meet code. So that might be something that you consider your policy that you only allow for um.
Code compliant issues.
Correct.
Non aesthetic issues.
That's a good lead.
And that would be specified in the bids specification.
You could do that. We haven't really had an issue with change orders on um, on the ship houses. We're not really seeing issues with contractors coming in and, you know, providing an initial low bid and bringing in multiple change orders. Um, that, that's not something I'm, I'm seeing from my standpoint.
It's not very prevalent, so.
But the possibility exists that it could become an issue?
It, it could, yes.
You only talk about five hundred fifty-four dollars, didn't you?
Uh, this one is six hundred.
Six hundred.
The next one is five hundred fifty.
Yeah, sure too. But it's gonna be hard to get somebody to bid on that. Little, little add-on change order, change order.
Well, this change order, both the change orders that are before you tonight are for inspections that weren't expected because of additional work that had to be done on the home.
But I'm saying there, you know, to get somebody else involved, they don't want to, oh, if you already got a contractor there doing the fifty thousand dollar job and then kind of find out you gotta add on another six hundred dollars.
Right.
You know, it, it don't, I mean, it don't even seem feasible to try to get another in contractor involved.
So you're saying if additional work is found, instead of stopping them at what they bid and then going out to look for somebody else to do that?
Somehow another needs to be dead in a way to make sure it's a fair market price, you know, not.
Well, we try our best, but during construction, especially on older homes, a lot of times things come up that you just don't expect.
Yeah, I'd like to see a legal representative take a look at reinstalling local builders or contractors preferences wherein it's allowed by law and reinstating that policy. You said that you thought there was some area that was prohibited, right?
Yes, if, if my memory serves correct, it was related to federal funding sources, though. I'd be happy to go back and research that.
But in all other cases, you don't know of any prohibitions against it, right?
Correct. If we're, if we're spending our own money, yes, we absolutely can have a local.
Then I'd like to see it re implement that process, that procedure.
The ship program is managed by the state though, correct?
It is, yes.
Yeah, you, you would need a motion.
Then I, I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
So what is your motion, Dr. Spire?
My motion is that we reinstate local bidders preferences where it is not prohibited by federal law.
And that'll be going into our countywide purchasing policy?
Yes.
After our research.
Yeah, got second, Mr. Crutchfield. Got a motion in the second.
Now you've got a motion on the, on the floor.
Yeah, I ignored it.
Didn't we already have a motion already previous or side of number one?
Yeah, two previous.
We never did vote on that, no. So I think you made the motion, Mr. Crutchfield's second, and this is.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
We're not trying to hound you. We just, we want to be careful of the money.
Now, we need to vote off the motion, I just made the local bidders preferences.
All right, we got a motion, but I've fired the second, but. Mr. Crutchfield?
So just for clarification, you asking staff to bring back a policy that we can vote on?
Yeah, and when we're receiving bids from bidders, if it's not prohibited by law, then I'd like for us to reinstitute, I'm trying to think of the percentages, local bid of preferences.
Five percent.
Okay, so I'm saying re implement that um, price differential for local bidders.
So with that being said, I think uh, bringing a memo to add to the policy for approval at a later time. So we, but the reason is, there could be questions as to what's local. I mean, are we talking Jackson County only? Um, some larger projects may have a more reasonable reach, so just want to make sure we're not excluding anyone that may or may not fall within that threshold.
My thinking is folks who reside in Jackson County.
Okay.
My, my problem would be with that is how many, how many contractors do you have in Jackson County that you could contact?
Well, and, and that's the problem with going into purchasing policy. We, you know,
Kind of hard.
And a bunch of different procurements.
Well, like a general contractor in Jackson County, there's very limited general contractors. I mean, you, M and W, it's got limited bonding capacity, so.
Well, I think we, in the past, we've made exceptions for people who were sole source providers. You know, if, if they wanted to count and provide that particular product, you have to go outside of the county to look for it.
And that's typically reviewed once bids are received, look at where they're based or where products come from.
I, I think maybe the best thing to do would be to ask staff to bring back a local option bid preference policy that we can look at.
Yeah.
I participated in that program a year going by and what were part of it. And the last person, and I don't remember who it was, it's been four, five years ago. They were pretty specific about the rule and not going over a mount and they added so many different things. If, if there was no reason to bid really, so I just stopped bidding that program. But the, the ship program is a good thing for people that are struggling or don't have the funds to do what they really need to do from their job or where they've had all of it. So I, 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 I see both sides of it really and understandably so, but it would make it too hard for them. People just go bid some other job and I think that's what Mr. Crutchfield allowed it. But anyway. All right, we got a second bid. I mean, second. But move and checking.
So again, before I vote, what can you clarify what the motion is?
All I'm saying, let's reinstitute, this board reinstitute giving local bidders a five percent preference.
Master board?
Yes.
Well, I, I think I would draw my motion for second. Reason why is because I think it's gonna be hard just to stay in Jackson County and get the work done. I, I, you know, I, I'd rather, I'd like to see it all be done in Jackson County, but I think that's gonna be, it's gonna be restricting us too much to try to get some, don't get enough people to bid on it.
If you don't, if that's the case, you can always go outside of it. But I truly believe in depth of my heart that I think local folks will be giving some preference.
I agree with that.
I'm a big believer in that as well.
I, I agree with you.
I think you've got to be careful with just saying, I, I mean, on a ten million dollar project, that could be a huge difference. And uh, you can also discourage uh, out of town, and I'm, I'm thinking building construction projects because that's where I, where I live. But you know, you could discourage out of town, non-local bidders from bidding it and end up costing yourselves a lot of money. I, I, I think I, I'm not opposed to having a local option preference, but I'd like for the staff to bring that policy back and with some detail before we, before we approve it because it's more complicated than what you think.
Right.
Couldn't we just address that to the ship program?
Could do to the ship program because those can be smaller contractors.
Ship program has a cap on it, doesn't it?
Does have a cap. Michelle's concern is the funding for ship may have limitations on the award. So that may be exempt from the policy altogether.
Yeah.
Notice of, was there a policy in place previous? It seemed like I, I'm like Dr. Spires. It seemed like at one time there was a policy. Can we bring that back?
Generally, yes. And as long as we're spending our own money, yes.
Can that policy be, be brought back so that we can look at it and see what it says and then vote on it?
Yes.
And may I ask who authorized the elimination of that policy?
It would have been in a, an update to the purchasing policy.
The board.
The board has to approve that, wouldn't they?
That's correct.
I have a second. You would, still withdraw you. Yeah, a second. All right, we have have a motion, but we don't have a second. Anybody want a second?
I don't have a problem with if it's just for the ship program because of the lesser amount. And I don't know, Dr. Spire, it may, uh, amendment to his.
To include the ship program?
I think that's the only it should be is the ship program right now.
And I'll, I'll amend my motion to include the ship program.
Okay.
To include or just make it just for the ship program?
Doing the blue.
Okay, so he said to include.
I think I just.
That's not what you were asking? I'm sorry.
Just addressed the ship program right now.
Oh, and not, not my motion?
Well, e- everything else, I'm, I tend to agree with that it's going to eliminate a lot of bidding, like the jail roof out here.
Okay.
That's a huge amount.
Well, it may, but I stand by my reasons and most of us, chairman, whether they second or not.
Yeah, you, you're just talking about ship program, is that right, Dr. Spire?
No, no, no. I was talking about just the purchasing policy overall. I think Mr. Brant is saying he's willing to vote for the ship, okay, which is a different motion from my motion. We didn't have a second yet, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so second up, uh, like we've said, we don't have many of these, but oddly enough, we've had two tonight. This is another request for additional fees under maximum, maximum amount for ship program to cover inspection fees. Um, I don't know if Kim will come back or not, but this project's in, in Sneed's for rehab assistance.
This is similar to the first case. These are additional inspections associated with additional work. I'll offer a motion to approve the five hundred fifty-four dollar exception to the ship maximum award.
Well, I got a motion in the second to approve. All sixty-five, uh, they didn't have. Move along, please, sir.
All right, so next up, we have an application or a request for board approval for film emotion, photography special use permit. An application for film emotion photography special use permit was submitted by Plum Pictures on January thirteenth. Special use permit is for filming of documentary, documentary video at the location of Howell Boat Landing north of Sneed's. Production will consist of a crew of seven to eight people using two cameras and no larger filming equipment. Filming will take place between hours of five, eight AM, five thirty AM and one PM. Um, one day between January twenty ninth and February fifth, depending on production schedule.
And uh, more details were submitted to all of the various departments and there were no objections made by the sheriff, fire, rescue or none of those.
Correct.
That being the case, I'll offer a motion to approve the film emotional photography special use permit with the conditions as spelled out.
Motion, well, Mr. Don, throw it. Second, 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 Mr. Crutchfield. All in favor? Move along. All right, Mr. Daniels.
So next up is board review and certification of the revised ship annual report. Revision was made to the previously certified ship annual report to correct accounting errors on several projects by the sub recipient. The corrections are administrative in nature and no funding adjustments are required. The corrections were to update administrative expenditures erroneously attributed to program expenditures on the report for the following lines. Rehab assistance produced, I'm sorry, rehabilitation assistance reduced from two hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-one cent to two hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and thirty cents. And emergency assistance reduced from sixty thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-one cents to fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. The correction has been approved by Florida Housing Finance Corporation.
Master board, please.
Offer a motion to approve the certification of the revised ship program annual report officially year twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three and twenty-four. Authorize, you as the chairman sign.
I'll sign it. Got a motion in the second. All in favor, raise your right hand. I'll be sure and sign it. All right, move along, yeah.
So next up is our consent agenda. Everyone's had a chance to look that over. If there's any questions which need to address.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, raise your right hand. Get out. Move along.
All right, so next is the uh, a request for board approval to waive the fee for use of citizens lodge by the Jackson County Education Foundation. They host an annual event, a five K run every year.
A motion to approve the fee waiver.
Second.
Don, for the motion. Mr. Crutchfield has a second. All in favor.
Move along.
So next up is a request for Polk Works project for um, dirt to be assisted to Day Spring Christian Academy. Um, the Day Spring Christian Academy has requested two loads of dirt to assist with new basketball court. Rowan Bridge will be able to haul the material. The material costs estimated three hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
And second.
That's it.
Go ahead.
If you can make this part of your motion to declare the dirt a surplus.
Would you, you willing to do that, Mr. Brant?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. As long as it's served, that this is a private institution, is that right?
Yes.
How would that be any different if John Q. Public were to load the dirt at the daycare center?
We treat it similarly to previous requests we've had from religious organizations that are also private institutions that have been granted in the past.
Yeah, I guess what I'm thinking, several years ago, I had the, uh, a request to dump a couple loads of dirt in the cemetery.
Okay.
And I was told at that time that as long as they were having religious services at this location, it was the private institution, you could not help.
Okay.
If they were to close the church down and no longer have religious services there, then they kind of could help. So I want to know when did it change, what has changed? Are we going beyond our parameters?
There's a, there's actually a attorney general opinion specific to dirt um, that allows the county to declare the dirt a surplus and to dispose of it just as you would any other surplus tangible property. I'm, I'm not sure about the cemetery issue because state law generally allows us to um, to expend public dollars on maintenance and upkeep of cemeteries.
Yeah, if, if it was very rare in the case rate, then you know, I wouldn't have any heartburn forever. We're talking about a private institution.
Is something we do similar, similar, is this similar to other uh, requests?
In my opinion, it is. It's a, you know, it is private, but it is a, a public institution for education. So I mean, it's really up to the board how we want that.
It's a private institution for education. It, it never falls within. It it never falls within the public domain.
Fair enough. So a private educational facility, institution, um, let's make a request and we're bringing it to you guys.
You heard motion approved by declaring the soil surplus. Did I second the motion?
Okay, I have a motion in second to approve. The board's pleasure. Raise your right hand if you vote for it.
I declare. But that let's make sure we just noted that if we have another private institution asking for similar kind of a deal from the county, that we need to be open minded about that as well.
Want a minute to reflect that, right?
Yes, most definitely, most definitely.
Add that to the minute. We'd appreciate. Thank you. All right, move along, Dan.
All right, next up is a request for right-of-way use permit for from Florida Power and Light. This is bringing back the issue over Delwood Cypress Road at the Hollister Solar Farm project. They're wanting to pump excess storm water from one side of the road to the other, burying underground irrigation line to disperse the excess water onto another portion of their property. Um, so we've been able to get some additional information. I was able to go out this morning and inspect the site myself, identify the two areas on the subject disposal site that have been identified by the contractor. I feel is adequate. Um, so the request is to basically bury a irrigation line temporarily in the existing dirt road.
So when they when they bury the line, are they gonna trench it or are they gonna not jack and board?
I believe we have some representatives here uh, for the contractor. So the uh, Black and Beach representatives.
I'm familiar with Black and Beach. Yep, yep.
I'm Mike.
Sometimes bad.
Okay. Dell with the OCI, Black and Beach. Travis Jordan with Blue Sky, he's the contractor.
Yes.
Travis Clapp with Florida Power and Light uh, with Bartek.
So will the pipe be, are you gonna trench the road, cut the road, and then re-pack it? Because that, I guess I, when I thought about this, it was going to be basically a jack and board where you, you know, push the pipe under the road. I'm concerned a little bit about once you cut that road, even though it's a dirt road.
It don't, it doesn't matter to me, I mean.
Yeah.
Unless you gonna guarantee this board that you gonna fix it.
Yes, sir.
We gonna ask you a lot of questions, not to cause you any problem, but just that what, for the word of the man said, we'll be, they'll be, y'all will be gone and we'll still be here.
We'll have that road back.
What we're the most interested in. What is this a, it is a dirt road?
It is a dirt road, yes, sir. Uh, Delwood Cypress.
Delwood Cypress Road. What, how far down off either highway is that?
Through about twenty-five hundred feet probably.
What big, how big a pipe you going for it?
So it'll, right now, we're thinking an eight-inch PVC pipe.
Yes. How you gonna solidify it once you bury?
Well, so we're just gonna excavate the trench and road and put the pipe in and recompact it with, you know, red clay, which is what the road consists of already.
When that red clay washes down. What are we gonna do?
So.
Are you, are we gonna fix it or you?
So this is gonna be a hands-on project for us for moving this water, and hopefully it's as temporary as possible. And, you know, we're gonna put the pipe in, maintain the road while the pipe's in for that area. Take the pipe out, fix the road.
Why would you take the pipe out?
When we're done discharging the water, we'll remove the pipe.
Is the water just temporary?
It's temporary, yes, sir.
Where is the water coming from, the sky?
No, it's where it came from, but it's inside of our uh, solar farm, Atlas Solar Farm. And there's a low spot that's holding water. Our plan is to pump the water out, muck out that blow area. And the water should perk back into the ground after that, so.
We gonna have a hole in pond there?
We, um, so it's FPL property where the water is currently. We're gonna pump it across the road to FPL property. And there's, our engineer came up with this depression over here that will hold four hundred thousand gallons. We think that is adequate to hold the water that we have inside right now. If not, we've got three million uh, gallon area down here that we could. If this won't hold it, we're gonna pump it down here.
So you're not sure it will hold it?
It is weather dependent, right? So I mean, we get a big rain while we're doing this operation.
Yeah, so what's gonna happen to the area that you're pumping the water from? Are you gonna spill it? Or what's gonna preclude it from filling back up again?
We're gonna muck out, muck out the bottom. The thought is, the engineers say that the silk that has washed in before the site was stabilized.
Improve the percolation.
Yes.
Got.
So when we take the silk out, it's gonna perk into the ground.
Is there any one of y'all an engineer?
Yes, sir.
A P, no? Okay. How many of those pieces of paper do you have? One?
Two.
Two? I count five board members with me. And I'm, and I turn it, I don't know about it.
Eight inch pipe or four inch pipe? Eight inch pipe, and that's what you're gonna pump the water through. You're not using it as a sleeve or a chase.
We're using it for a sleeve.
Okay, and so.
So there's.
Jeffrey, what do you think? I mean, you got any concern about that that road after they put the pipe in and take the pipe back out? Is it gonna be? You know, it's always hard to get, I mean, compaction the same as the adjacent surfaces.
I'm good. Not uh, speaking of mine, but I think the, I think the plans are in your packets. But uh, I mean, I don't have any real concern because it's my, it's my understanding they gonna put a hose through the eight-inch casing, correct? And then, and once they do it, I mean, uh, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be any different than uh, than putting a covert in.
Steel pipe or PVC pipe to chase?
It's supposed to be an eight-inch PVC pipe with a hose going through it.
All right, are y'all gonna be willing to guarantee this for a certain number, certain amount of time, two years, three years?
Haven't had that discussion, but we were gonna make it, we're gonna make it right.
Yes, well, that would be the same as a bond if you didn't come back, you know? Most jobs like that are bonded. Am I not right, Mr. Don, approach?
Gulf Power owns both pieces of property?
Yes, yes, sir.
If Gulf Power issue some type of letter, ba- basically stating it, build, maintain the road.
Uh, Florida Power and Light, eh?
And and so, uh, Kerry just brought to my attention that this permit is, this put place is for twenty years. So that will put them.
Yeah, that's good enough. Now, Black and Beach is in Kansas City, if I remember that.
Is that in your district?
Yes.
I mean, where they're putting the pipe, is that in your district?
Well, yeah, at best I can tell. Yes, sir, go ahead. Whenever you dig out the silt and all, and you think that's gonna hold all the water and not have to do that again?
Yes, that is.
My concern is taking that pipe out and then end up having to put it back at a later date, you know? Might wanna leave it there.
We should know pretty quickly after we get rain, after we get it mucked out, but we think it's gonna perk.
Are you, you own the company? Y'all own the company that's gonna do this?
I I do.
Okay, where's your home, sir?
Havana, Florida.
Okay, no, right, where is? All right, so you're within reach of us, really.
I am.
Not just, not a.
I am.
You know, in Southside anyway. What we doing, we we here to stay, and we want that pipe that you run to be there to stay or that water not to cause a problem on the road, and that's why our questions are what they are. And we may ask them more, and we may think about some more. Uh, who's gonna inspect that?
I will.
I mean, Jeffrey will look at it too.
On our behalf, it'll be Rowan Bridge.
Okay. You know, gonna watch that and ma- make sure the water don't approach on somebody else.
Absolutely. I've got a surveyor, and we know who owns the adjacent properties. So there's two basins right there on the east side of Delwood Cypress, you know, a bigger one and a smaller one. And we're just trying to move that water across the road without impeding traffic or or damaging anything. And, you know, we're gonna monitor what we're pumping, make sure it's not leaving our parcels, you know, like you're asking. And and just keep up with it as we do it.
When I had a chance to go this morning, there's two very distinct bowls. I mean, there's direction all the way around.
I've seen that road underwater for weeks and weeks and weeks at the time. I used to travel that road all the time. Worked up and down that road as well. And that water has a tendency to stay right there for a long time.
Exactly where we're gonna put the pipes, Lee.
Yes.
You think the pumping operation will take about two weeks?
Depending on the weather.
I don't blame. It's cold right now.
I think I'm here with kind of consensus is it's okay, uh, just as long as they'll kind of commit to maintaining the road after this is done. All the motions are still, we approve the right-of-way news program for appeal.
All motion you have second. Motion in second to approve. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you. Tracy Andrews.
We'll, we'll be in touch with you if there's problems.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, move along, yeah.
So next up is the uh, request for board approval of contract twenty-four, twenty-five dash oh one. This is Shangri-La Elevated Board Vault Construction with Monolith Construction. Their bid amount was four hundred and twenty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. This bid amount is within the grant amount that we were awarded from FDP. We're requesting to move forward the project.
Which is basically approved in the contract. We had already approved them as the low bidder.
Correct.
And the scope of the work is the same. We're just approving the contract now.
So we did identify, or so there were bid options in the bids. So we did identify which direction we wanted to go with the eight-foot elevated board vault. So this is implemented into the contract.
Call, this included everything, the floating dock, uh, the I'm willing to walk all the way up to Shangri-La. It did not include the one little portion that kind of went off to the
The spur of the hill.
West of FPL, when everything else was included.
Yes, sir.
And that's an engineered project. I'm gonna ask a question to be sure.
Yes, sir. This is being tracked and administered by D H M, David H. Melvin, engineer.
And so there's warranty there and all of uh, as they build it when they finish.
Yes, sir, with uh, D H M performing inspections as well during construction.
I move to approve the contract with Monolith Construction LLC and authorize you to sign it.
I I'll sign it if we can pass it, Mr. Don, for, Mr. Don, for bid, uh, bid. Grant second. All in favor of the Shangri-La project, raise your hand, all right? Move along.
So next is the request for board approval of contract RB twenty-four, twenty-five dash oh four. This is the annual culvert culvert pipe contract with J and G Culverts. Um, this was awarded, uh, or J and G Culverts Inc. was awarded a contract at the one fourteen meeting. This is a contract uh, to reflect the bid amount. Yes, sir, the annual contract road bridge.
Y'all heard the.
So, wait. Got a second?
That's your board's pleasure. You know, motion in second, first by Mr. Brant. Everybody, everybody voted before I even got it there. Thank you, Mr. Clarence.
All right, sir. Next up is change order, a request for change order number three for the jail roof and HVAC replacement project. This change order will provide material and labor to install expansion joints with crickets at the admin building and cafeteria with tapered insulation over dorm areas, new flash and counter flash and all materials incorporated. Um, as well as insulation installation. And this will be funded uh, from the county match portion of the jail grant project.
CRA, are there the architectural record on this? Did they look at this at all and make any recommendation to approve or disapprove?
They did. Um, I don't recall the individual's name that's been performing the site inspections and been back and forth with the contractor. Um, but involved throughout this process.
Donald, if you like, from now, we'll get a person that inspected that.
I have his contact. I can provide, um, if anybody needs it or wants it.
But we feel like this will rectify the the situation that we knew existed.
Right.
I mean, as far as.
Well, that we didn't. We found out after the fact, once they pulled off the old roof and material and discovered.
Found out that the portion of it was steel instead of granite, concrete instead of steel.
That's right.
Oh, man, we talking about the, what we used to call the coal plant? Is it talking about the old coal building?
No, sir. This is the jail behind the extension office, the Jackson County Jail.
Okay, okay.
That thing's what, twenty-five, thirty years old already?
It is, and this is the original roof. This will be the first replacement on it. About thirty-five years old.
Yeah, okay.
It's older than I am.
I yield a thirty-five.
Yeah, the overall cost of this project, Red, if you uh, for both uh, replacing quite a bit of HVAC equipment as well.
Yes, sir. I believe it's eleven units total.
What was the overall cost of this?
With this change order included?
Everything, yeah.
Uh, I don't have that total up to date.
But it was over a billion dollars, wasn't it?
Oh, yes, sir. Uh, we're, we're gonna be creeping up to two and a half at this point.
Make a motion to approve. Yeah, make the motion approve. What's the rest of the board's place?
One second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the jail roof. But I think about saying I. All right. Move ahead.
We have a request for board approval to award the interior painting project at Great Oaks to Paint King USA. We solicited quotes to paint the interior of Great Oaks. We received three quotes. Staff recommends that we award a project to the lowest qualified bidder, Paint King USA LLC in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. County will purchase the materials um, to accommodate any tax savings. This fee will be for labor.
I haven't talked to Kelsey, but the Paint King was the one that did the exterior painting on that.
That's correct.
We fairly well satisfied with the work.
Yes, sir. He wrapped that up just before.
Especially working out there at night, several different times.
And that's pretty much the entire interior of that building?
But there's a few rooms with wallpaper that are excluded, but it's the majority of them, yes, sir.
I'll offer a motion to approve the request to uh, uh, award the interior painting to the Paint King. For twelve thousand dollars, not to include the paint.
Your motion, Mr. Don, proposed by Mr. Brant. Approve for the paint. All in favor, right? I hope he's not a free coat man.
So, next up is a request for board approval update to the purchasing policy. This is to reflect the requirement of property sheets for items. Um, previously a thousand, moving that up to five thousand to accommodate the request from the clerk at the last meeting.
I move it through.
Motion to approve, Mr. Brant, second by Dr. Spire, excuse me. All in favor? Move ahead.
So this next item is just for board discussion on the date of the February twenty-five meeting. So Northwest Florida Economic Development Symposium will be held on February twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Staff usually attend as well as commissioners to this event, which is held at Sandestin. So that conflicts with our regular meeting time on the twenty-fifth. So if any board members were planning to attend, we would need to adjust our meeting time. Um, if not, we could very well continue on.
Is it called, is it a cost for that and for?
There is with the overnight stay, um, but this is, so it was previously, it's been going on since it was uh, Gulf Power uh, Symposium, Economic Development Symposium, so um, don't know if y'all had plans or not. I'll, I'll be here. Uh, I know some staff, I've never attended, but I'm fine to sit this one out if y'all wanna have a meeting.
I'm fine to move it to Monday night.
So move, so move.
Thank you. Dr. Spire, move that we move it to Monday night. Chris, feel second. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay, and just clarification, that'll be a six P M meeting.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're yield the six.
All right, so uh, next up is the uh, um, request for board approval of the Gardner Abyss engagement letter. Um, Mr. Long came, a city manager for Mariana, Mr. Long came and discussed this with you guys at the last meeting. So this is the proposal from Gardner Abyss to engage them for the PSC Public Service Commission to them to speak on our behalf with the FPU rate increase. Um, I got word earlier that the school board has already approved this, so they are engaged. And if you guys um, decide to continue with that, they will serve as our Jackson County representative representative at the uh, March Public Service Commission hearing.
What's the board's plan? I make a motion to approve it. I make a motion to approve it. Second. Or motion and a second to approve. All in favor, raise your right hands. Move along.
All right. All right. So we've already established Commissioner Donna Pro as our county representative on the A R P C board. A R P Cers requesting an alternate in case Mr. Don Pro is not able to attend. Um, so we're asking the board. Let me just read the dang thing. I get all sideways. So when the board reorganized in November, uh, Commissioner Donna Pro was appointed to serve as the B O C C's representative. A R P C staff is requesting the board appoint a county commissioner to serve as an alternate, as well as appoint a municipal elected official to serve as a representative. And another municipal elected official to serve as an alternate. So Kim Applewhite, uh, councilperson from Grand Ridge. I spoke with her yesterday. She has agreed to serve again in that role. So we would need an additional commission, county commissioner, as well as a separate municipal, uh, commissioner or councilperson to serve her.
The additional county would be an alternate to me in case, and then the municipality person will be an alternate to count.
Correct.
Alternate to Mr. Doctor.
Not in a second. We need one of each.
I don't want myself.
Okay.
All in favor. Well, I'll make a motion that we appoint Sheriff Westwood as the alternate county, uh, appointing.
Second. Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of me being the alternate. Thank you. That's a real job.
And any recommendation on another elected official, um, anyone you'd like me to reach out to, ask if they're willing?
You got that. Um. Do we need one from that side of the county?
What's question again now?
As an alternate to, to athletic planning council.
Yeah.
An alternate member.
I thought that was what was asked for.
Yeah, that's what I thought. But he, uh.
He gonna take your place.
As an alternate.
If he does go.
They want an alternate for city commissioners and the county commission.
So there's two alternatives that we got.
Oh, okay. You want one that's not a commissioner.
There'll be an alternate for me, and then we need an alternate for Kim out there.
That's correct.
And that person needs to be a, a city commissioner almost.
And an elected official, yes, sir. Municipal official.
Uh, you, y'all, what do you think?
You, you want to reach out to maybe some of the municipalities? I mean, I don't know anybody.
About somebody grateful, possibly. I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, we can talk to someone and see if they're interested.
That's what we just have to do.
I, we don't have a timeframe, um.
I got out city commission. City commission.
I, I would direct staff to reach out to some of the municipalities and see if we can find, find one that can run by.
How many? Bring it back to the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, looks like we claim the, our addition items or quitclaim deed first, Michelle.
So before we move into that and before I lose my train of thought, I want to redirect you all back to page two ninety-eight of your packets. I think this will give Dr. Spires the comfort that he wanted. You did not get rid of your local preference. Uh, it's still in section four point eight of your purchasing policy. Subsection A one provides for the five percent, um, preference. Subsection two, A two specifically exempt, uh, the Florida Health and Finance Corporation. Will be shipped in our H H R P programs and then subsection A three addresses, uh, the, uh, federal and state. Uh, funding sources that we cannot use local preference on. So I think that covers everything.
Okay. So in essence, when we can, we will, if we, if we're here, then we want.
Yeah. I don't know if we're currently implementing that five percent preference, but the policy exists.
We don't have. Our place, we ought to be adhering to it.
I agree, yeah.
So they can be at five percent.
They're given a preference in the amount of five percent of the bid price or five percent of the, the total points available, whichever is applicable.
Some rankings by, um, numerical value versus lump sum, like R Q versus R F P. So still five percent applies.
As long as it's not state or federal dollars.
Correct.
Correct.
It's just coming to them. So no, you need no approval from where we are.
No, I think that addresses all the concerns that Dr. Spire has.
So we will begin to implement that, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, move along. We go quick claim deed.
So we are being asked by the city of Marianna, uh, to relieve our, um, reverter interest. This was the old health department, uh, that we gave to the city of Marianna, and we kept a reverter, um.
Which apartments did you say?
The old health department.
Oh.
Um, they eventually built part of the nursing home, I think, over this, uh, and now they're gonna sell this property. Uh, and so they are asking us to release that. Reverter interest to this quitclaim deed.
I want to do so.
I believe this was once considered the Jackson County Gardens Clinic, I believe.
Mm-hmm. It was old health department, then the Gardens Clinic was connected. The two buildings were connected within the.
They, um, they lived to a nonprofit, another nonprofit.
I'm not sure who we'd buy or.
You know, there was a problem with that when we had it. You know, something when it was in the back, original people had donated that for a health department, had to be gave to another. Like couldn't sell it, it had to be gave to another nonprofit.
Right, that was an R D. I think the school board maybe had some interest. There was more.
I believe it had to be.
That's why we gave it.
A, a firm or individual was providing healthcare services.
Right. Right, that's what was. So I don't know, you know, I know you're saying they're trying to sell it. I don't know. They. That, that was a stipulation when we were gonna try to sell it and we gave it to the city of Marianna because it was gonna be a health provider to, to add on to the nursing home.
So is it going to be a health-related ton of media?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for anybody, but the, in the email correspondence that I got from the city attorneys, it references the city of Marianna. To Southern Healthcare. I would assume that's the name of the buyer.
Yeah, okay. I don't know.
It sounds like a good process.
Yeah. So there is another healthcare person. Did we understand that right?
It appears to be.
Had to be, or revert back to the family estate. Okay. Motion still standing, Mr. Don Pro.
Well, I, I guess my motion would be that we approve the quitclaim deed to the city of Marianna contingent upon it not, you know, being, you know, contrary to any. You know, policy or regulation that would prohibit us from doing so. Second, is that all right, Michelle?
Yeah, got a motion from Mr. Don Pro to take, Mr. Crutchfield, to approve the quitclaim deed to the city of Marianna. What's the board's plan? Um, pass it down. Is that about it?
Couple more.
Okay, let, hold on just a minute if you will, Mr. Dan. The gentleman back there that dressed it well and said he wanted to address it. Did you want to address us after we finished this other one or two, or you want to?
That's your pleasure, Mr. Chairman. I'm here.
Thank you. You're very kind. Thank you. All right, move on.
All right, so next up is, uh, asking for clarification or direction regarding the culvert installation ordinance. Um, so Michelle was reviewing, working with staff, trying to update the ordinance and had some more questions come up. We'll try to get ironed out tonight.
So if you look in your additional packets, you'll see the.
Yeah.
Um. The, the backside of, yeah. Eight one.
One on top.
Well, might be.
Thank you for item letter.
Yeah, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I was, um, appearing remotely, you know, at the last meeting. I was pretty sick. And by the time y'all got to this discussion, I was. Not really as engaged as I could have been. Um, but I needed a little bit more direction from the board on. Whether you want these changes to apply to, uh, every applicant for, um. A, a culvert installation. I went back and listened to the meeting and all of the discussions seemed to be related only to homeowners and residential property. And our code currently doesn't distinguish between any property types. Uh, so based on the discussion, I drafted this language that residential applicants must, must purchase and deliver a culvert and if needed, any mitered ends and bands. And may request the county to construct one driveway to a single residence at no cost. Alternatively, the applicant can hire a licensed contractor for their driveway connection. Any additional connections or modifications will be the applicant's responsibility. And then for all other applicants, the cost and the length would be the same, that they would bear that cost.
But if they hire their own contractor, they would be responsible for paying that contractor the cost. So I will make sure that that's clear.
I can add that language. But I just need a clarification as to whether you all were.
If it's a, uh, commercial application like, you know, with the new, uh, uh, oil change facility, they would be responsible for, for those costs entirely. This is only for residents, residential.
Yes, the way this is drafted and just from the, the discussion from the last meeting, that there wasn't any discussion about commercial or agricultural or any other property types. So I just need a direction because our current code doesn't distinguish between any of those. Properties.
What you're asking is do, do we want to do this for everybody regardless, or do we want to limit this, restrict it to residential developments often?
Correct.
Well, most of, I would think most of the commercial one. It probably, would probably be a paid, um, public entrance. And which we wouldn't, we don't need to get into that, but, uh, as long as it's dirt.
Is this fourteen? We, we talking about number four?
Yes, yes.
Uh, I have my turn. If I have room to make a motion, no.
You can pass the gavel and make a motion.
I move we table that.
We got a motion from Commissioner Westbrook to, uh, table this item.
Yes.
Okay, a second from Commissioner Branch. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Message and announce.
Thanks, sir.
Now that be pending further review of the proposal or?
That's correct.
Want any more information from us? Okay, all right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just, we'll see about it.
Future, future consideration. I kind of lean towards letting, letting this sit like it is with just the residential. I don't know that we want to get involved in. We can, we can discuss that.
That was not in my, I was not privy to that in my board package. And, uh, I've had a lot, I've listed a lot of discussion about it. And so I think we need some more. And we just know what we're doing.
So we'll table this and bring this up at the next meeting.
Yes, sir. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We're welcome. Thank you.
All right, so our next addition came from the sheriff's office, um, request for approval of the JAG C award agreement for the sheriff's office. And I believe, um, this would be for.
Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant.
Right, and it'll be, uh, for various equipment. It's got a, a list in your packet, a total award amount of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Offer motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Don Pro, second by Doctor Spire to approve the quest for the board approval of the JAG C award. All in favor, right? Both same time. Move along.
And then lastly, for our printed agenda is board approval of the, uh, property lease on Highway two seventy-three to Jason Hatcher. Is what Commissioner Crutchfield brought up last meeting about the, uh, two point eight acres that the county owns that he's interested in clearing and putting into his farming production. So we set him a draft agreement last Friday. They were to speak with him yesterday. We made a couple of minor tweaks, um, consisting of. The original agreement had thirty-day notice termination. We changed that to, uh, end of a crop cycle, just depending on where he's at in his rotation. Thirty days may not always accommodate, um, and this lease will be set for, uh, a dollar a year.
Make a motion to approve. Give a motion to approve with Commissioner Crutchfield.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Donna Pro. All in favor of it?
Well, I'm going to.
Excuse me.
Why just the dollar?
Go ahead, Doctor Spire.
I'm curious as to why the lease is on a dollar.
Uh, because the property needs to be cleared. It's been growing up over the years. So the county purchased it in twenty sixteen and it's had no improvements done. So the reduced lease amount was to accommodate the additional work on behalf of the leasing.
Okay, so the annual lease.
Year to year. We find the term just to make sure. Lease term one year. Yes, sir.
So you're reevaluated after the first year?
Sure, we can bring it back. Once it's been in production, we can negotiate an increased lease amount.
But, but there's no ideas given to this person that it will remain one dollar each year from that point on, is that right?
No, sir. And he actually, uh, proposed yesterday that he'd like to purchase it back. Um, this is the individual we bought it from in sixteen. Um, totally, we hadn't got to that point yet. We had, you know, this project on the table, but that's definitely something by the time this lease term ends. Um, we may look at that as an option.
Correct.
What, what, what this first was brought up about, it's right there joining and, uh, it's grove it up, undergrowth and small trees and stuff like this. They'll clear it all back off and then maintain it and keep it clean, which would be more valuable to the county if they want to use it or sell it. And it would be to grow up again. So, I mean, if you go up on the rent and he says they don't, ain't worth it to him, it'll grow up again. So I, I guess where that, where that's coming, if he, he maintained it, keep it clean.
Okay, right. The legal, there's, there's language saying that there's an guarantee that lease will automatically renew. Is that right?
Like there's not automatic or no?
Correct. So is that gonna be in contract, I'm asking?
So the lease term will be for one year with an optional one-year addition at the end of this first term.
Okay.
So that can be negotiated at that time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Commissioner. I was gonna say, this is the property that we purchased to build the fire station on.
Yes.
Several, several years ago. I, I wouldn't, it doesn't look like that's gonna be something that we're gonna be doing. I would. Better be amenable of selling it back to him if it's something that we can, uh, hopefully get our money back from.
Yes, sir. He made offer, I made a counter, we've still got to negotiate.
All right, what's the board's plan? I made a motion to approve.
I second it.
Okay. Motion approved, motion second. Awesome. Thank you, we see that winded up with that.
For the printed agenda, I do have a couple of ready table items if you'll allow, um.
Okay, let the gentleman that wants to come speak, let him come forward and then we'll take those up if that's favorable, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak and address the board. I'll be brief, uh, for you this evening. My name's Michael Richter. Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll, I'll try to. My name's Michael Richter. I'm the vice president of board insurance in the Florida Division. I've been before the board before, uh, approached you, uh, last year. Uh, and met with you and some of the staff just to bring it up a benefit for you, Mr. Chairman. By the way, congratulations on your, uh, your election to your seat. The purpose of me, uh, coming back before you this evening is to invite you to an event that I am hosting, um, for members and non-members for Governmental Insurance Trust. Um, in February and. Being that I attended the entire meeting, I saw that it was twen- February twenty-fifth. Y'all also have a, a conflict that you were accommodating for, but the good news is. Uh, mine is a one-day event. It's absolutely free. You won't have to have any overnight accommodations. And, uh, we're gonna feed you real well. You got Jackson County's very own, Miss Brenda Pettis is gonna cater our lunch, so she never fails to impress. I see, uh, approval over there. So, uh, anybody that knows that will surely want to register and sign up and come. So the purpose of this event is for some training. It's a seminar series that, uh, preferred hosts across the state and around the state. And part of my mission in service to our rural county and areas and in increasing the. And part of my mission in service to our rural county and areas and in increasing the amount of 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 um. Service and support our rural counties get is to bring some things to the Panhandle, so we don't have to travel and have that burden and. You know, we can have equal opportunity uh here in this area, so I have uh um convinced them to give us an opportunity to host here locally. And so we're doing that this year for the the first time, hopefully it'll be an annual event, uh it's a most of a day, it's going to start at. We've got it nine AM Eastern, which be eight Central. And hopefully concludes somewhere in the mid afternoon, two thirty, three o'clock uh is is our goal. Uh but we're going to have be a little bit open ended for some networking opportunities. And the idea here is to give Jackson County the the opportunity to come uh mix with your uh the members in the surrounding areas. People that have previously been with your current carrier and and evaluate the option, uh the uh the other option. Uh for your your risk management package and see what their experience has been, how they transition. Get some education, don't take it from the salesman that shows up at the meeting, right? And uh thi- this was the best opportunity I could find to to make that convenient and um. Uh for everybody, so I would really like to encourage you to 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 attend.
Where's it gonna be at?
It's gonna be, and I got a flyer for you. And I got enough copies.
Uh I was passing here, you want to handle here, we'll.
We want to always have Jackson County in mind. I think that I think every person up here on this board would tell you that Jackson County is our first.
I'm sorry?
Jackson County is our first, I think I'd be safe in saying that for every member of this board.
Well, thank you for that, well, and I and just for a little bit of background, I've done some uh to let you know this could be productive. Even if I'm not asking you to consider that we're going to change what we're doing tonight, but uh to think about it. And give us opportunity to do the due diligence and vet this, um I'm confident we've got a twenty five year standing relationship with this carrier. And uh some of your your neighbors uh near and far here uh already have enjoyed the great service and opportunity with them. And they and I know through doing, getting a premium indication last year from underwriting, there's a significant amount of savings for Jackson County. I'm not talking about tens of thousands, I'm talking about hundred thousand plus, maybe even couple hundred six figure savings here. There's significant savings on the table and I'm just asking the board to consider um engaging that and and receiving. Uh a proposal so that you can fully vet it.
And this will be in Bristol?
This will be in Bristol, yes, sir, and it's on February twenty fifth, uh and it's a most day event, we'll start with.
Your home.
That's where I'm from, I'm from Liberty County, my office is there, um and because that's where I live, and then I I work the primarily the Panhandle.
Were you raised there?
I'm sorry.
Were you raised there?
Yes, sir, lived there my entire life. Yes, sir.
Not trying to pin you down, just want to be.
Uh yeah, we know, we know a lot of the same people, I can tell you, yes, sir.
And everybody down there for the most part is wonderful people, in my opinion.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, I'll I'll pass that along.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, if you need anything, you've got my card, I look forward to speaking to you, everyone love you when I can, please register and then I'll be able to prepare for you to be there.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead, Brett.
Yes, sir, so our our legislative deadline for uh appropriation request is fast approaching, Will Ann asked me to bring that up tonight. So our original pitch was to request uh hardening funds for our Fire Station Five, which is out close to the uh Sunland Facility. Um it was brought up, do something with roads, I don't know if that's still um a request or like a specific project with roads. Just trying to get some guidance on how we want to move forward with that.
What was the uh the construction amount associated with the hardening of the Fire Station Five?
Our ask would be one point five million.
Offer motion that we move forward with that request being the first priority, and then if we want to add uh any specific dirt road projects, I mean.
I think all of us can have, can name one or two.
Yep, right.
I think we have for. Get with the lobbyists to see what he suggests, how much, I I think we certainly should include dirt roads in the.
Yeah, that's an addition to the scrap money that we possibly will get.
Yes, sir.
And do we have scrap money requested and asked for?
Those deadlines are in March, so in February, we'll be bringing those applications and resolution to the board for consideration.
That's crap, don't include dirt roads, so.
Uh some do, it's different programs, most of it is for resurfacing, they do have one, and I don't remember exactly which one it is. That can improve a dirt road, um but we'll have that list for you, probably, yeah, the next meeting.
That crap program is dead in my heart. That be divided between the five districts, or you just pick one in one district?
In in the past, we've been able to apply, now obviously what's been funded is a little different, but we've been able to apply for at least one project in each district. And we intend to continue that.
Well, I made a motion to uh to include on the legislation, legis- legislative ask. Uh one point five million dollars for hardening of the Fire Station Five is the first priority.
I would second that if we can add at least one point five million.
And that would be split, I guess, five ways per district.
And that's not going to do a lot.
Must to understand your motion, Commissioner Donald, you better repeat that that motion, please.
My my motion was to uh for the legislative ask is to include as first priority, the hardening. Of Fire Station Five in the amount of one point five billion dollars, that was my motion.
And then Commissioner Branch made a second to add um put in one point five million for road projects as well.
Can you give me just a little bit of synopsis of why we need to harden that 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 station?
Uh it's extremely old, and we did have some issues after Hurricane Michael, it does not have emergency backup power. Although it is on city utilities, so as long as the city utilities backup system, it does have, you know, water, sewer, gas. Um but the idea is to, the shell itself has had some uh leaking issues. So to harden the exterior, replace the metal, and put in new insulation and then uh increase the emergency capability.
In terms of optional funding for that, though, would there not be grants that, I know Charlie Charlie has been writing a lot of grants for. That, I'm just thinking, would it be more advantageous to, we have to use this for roads and look for a grant that will help us to harden that building?
So we did look at that, um legislative requests for roads haven't been super successful in the past. Um and most of our fire related grants go to the apparatus, the equipment itself, not to facilities. Um so it really depends on which direction the board wants to go, but our recommendation would be for the legislative appropriation request for the facility. Um and continue our repetitive grant cycles for uh additional equipment.
Yeah, just know that we have a lot of dirt roads that we're concerned about, particularly for us, anyway.
Through the redistricting, I've got quite a few.
Yeah, really, 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 okay. I know you, one for one time, you only had about four miles.
Yeah.
Oh, you want to match him?
Yeah.
What's the board's plan?
I put a motion on the table, if we've got a second or not.
I second that. Motion in a second to approve the uh recommendation that the.
One point five million dollar request for hardening Station Five.
Entertaining second motion to to add the dirt roads to it if you like.
We typically, I'm sorry, we typically submit multiple requests with in priority. Um but we have been advised by our lobbyists that the uh statewide appropriations budget is going to be slim this year. With a large focus on emergency management, preparedness type projects.
Yeah, I thought I thought this is a worker, but we haven't seen him.
We can get him here if you want to talk to him.
No, sir, I'll let him make that decision for himself, not for you and him.
Fair enough.
But the time will come, he'll he'll hope he had come.
Okay.
I yield my time back.
He he's been he's been successful in getting those dollars and uh his his rep uh explained. Uh you know, his recommendations to us was to uh uh you know, keep the ask as slim as we could. And uh the emergency management, emergency uh facilities would be high priority, so. I'd rather I'd rather get those dollars than not getting any at all.
Well, I I as as far as the lobby's concerned, he did some things for this county prior to him being hired as a lobbyist. And did a great job and. And and lockstep with Commissioner Branch's son. And I was proud to see that happen when it happened, then a lot of it several years ago. But I would also say, the worst thing is that you do is not keep into it. So I yield, what I but I will deal, we'll deal with that as time goes.
I don't have a problem with with the, if we're if we're going to make one request for that. From what I hear, what I listen to, everybody makes multiple requests, I would make a motion if we request three million for roads.
Is that a motion, is that a motion, Commissioner Branch?
Well, we we already got a motion and a second, so we we can vote on that or?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did.
That's right, we can vote on that and just hold on, alright, on Commissioner Donald's request and motion. All in favor? Alright, now. Commissioner Branch, go right ahead.
I make a motion that we request three million uh for roads. For dirt road improvements.
Dirt road improvements, research and.
We got to start something.
Do we have a second?
Your motion was to?
To ask for three million for road, dirt road.
Okay, I'll second that.
Repaying, paving.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, they asked for three million dollars, legislators have got tons of money. And they'll have it the next time if we don't get part of it. All in favor, pleasure the Lord raise you up. When uh do we can apply to for the state to resurface favor?
The Scrap and Scott, the DOT grants?
Yeah.
They're due in March, first part of March, yep.
That's part, that's part of the scrap program.
Yeah.
I just know I got. Who the father of the scrap program is, I'm not correct, yeah, I do think.
And I've got one last thing, and then I'll I'll hush up, so um last order of business for uh administration tonight. Um as y'all know, Ms. Judy Austin has retired from her HR uh director position. Um so we would like to recommend and confirm Sarah Sun to take that position, moving from admin services into HR director. Um if that's good with you guys.
So move it to second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
And then likewise with that uh vacancy, we have another in-house promotion, Ms. Lindsay Dara has applied and interviewed for the. Uh admin services director position and is being recommended to fill that as well.
You heard the administration recommendation.
I'll offer that as a motion to go along with the recommendation of uh the administrator.
Thank you, my Commissioner Donald, second by Mr. Crutchfield, all in favor, raise your hand.
I guess my question, Mr. Chairman, would be, now that we've moved Sarah and Lindsay. Is there a uh, I guess we'll be looking for a new procurement officer or?
Yes, sir, so all those positions as well as procurement were publicly advertised and applicants submitted, will be following that same process. That's it for me.
Alright.
Let me ask you a question, did the advertisement, is it external and internal or just internal?
External, yes, sir.
External.
Has paper, we use some other uh publication sites as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead. I didn't know you wanted speaker, I'd already got you up. That's alright, be glad to have you, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Susan Coopman, on what y'all are talking about on the culvert thing, I know y'all, you tabled it. Could you have like a, I don't know if it'd be a public hearing for the public, because I just have some concerns. Like if you had a culvert put in, you know, that you bought the house and then like, because it's, you know, on the county, it got damaged. And everything, how is, how is that going to work with this culvert? Or or it's like, if they're putting culverts in and all that stuff, like the maintaining of it.
That would still be done by road and bridge.
But like, I understand that, Brett, but like, I'm saying like, you're, this ordinance, the way it states, like you said, it didn't, it didn't clarify resident. And then Westbrook tabled it.
That's right.
Like, that's what I'm saying, you know, it it's not clarified like, you know, you said something about paying the 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 contractor. Actually, if you put it in, they're responsible, do I understand that right?
So the the request is.
I'm kind of confused on this, that's why I wrote it down, you know, because he tabled it, I mean, there needs to be more of a discussion and explain how that works.
Yes, ma'am.
Like if somebody buys a house and the culvert's already there.
Right.
But it gets damaged over time, whether it's from the mowing or whatever and everything, I understand you're going to maintain it. But are you going to go back and find out how that culvert was put in, like?
Once it's installed and approved, it becomes part of the roadway, right away infrastructure. So regardless of who or when, if it's an established approved culvert or connection. It becomes maintenance of Jackson County Road and Bridge.
So and and, okay, I understand that now, so the question is if if it wasn't established to prove them one.
Then it's an illegal connection.
If if I may.
So we all come yank it out?
Excuse me one moment, please, and if I if the chairman may speak for a moment, just hold still and I'll.
Okay.
Try to clear that, clear it for you, be a little more clarification. I didn't see that in my board pack. We discussed that the other day at length, I don't want us to make a bad decision about culverts. I don't want to make, hold it to one person, I don't want to take our county staff and put them to a obligation. Of where they've got to go put in a culvert when we got a road, a tree down across the road. So that's the reason I asked to table it, that's the reason I made that motion, and what I will guarantee you, I will assure you. This board will make a decision one way or the other, and when we do, we don't mind having them asking, you'll give them your address. And you're not here, we'll, I'm write you a letter.
Okay, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You you finished?
Yes, sir, I'll hear it.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Donald, you are about the fires, or anybody else?
I just got a question, we get an update on the Mill Pond, I mean, I I know that right now everything looks good, uh. Okay, or what what's the plan moving forward?
So in the next weeks, not months, um FWC staff will be out doing inspections, trying to see. Because obviously it's submerged right now, but we can still manage, maintain and manage growth. Um so he'll be coming out, they've already got funding secured for, if needed, a spring app, early spring application. Um late February or March, so we don't have that scheduled, just because don't know if it's needed yet, he's been tied up. He's got a new employee, he's training across his region, but he'll be out in the the next couple of weeks. And we'll be get a game plan together, and if anything is decided, I'll be able to write that update at the next meeting.
So in the next couple of weeks, you should come out, you'll do a kind of an analysis, look at it and uh get together a game plan as far as. If we're going to do another application, and if we do, uh when that'll happen.
And where?
Yeah, and where?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Donald, yes, I have an unofficial offer for some money from the Northwest Florida Water Management District. I have not pinned him down on getting it or anything like that, but I will, and if it is, it'd be a nice windfall for us. And uh we have some good people there that are friends to all of us, I guess. And one of them really special to me, the director, and I think that we'll see something come out of that. That'll be appropriate for all of us in the county and for the Mill Pond as well.
So I have.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
What about hog situation at the action?
Uh they've been steady trapping, so they removed three over the weekend, three more over the weekend. Um our number is sixty plus, um according to the trapper who's out on site. He's thinking the larger groups have dispersed, that's why we're seeing smaller numbers in the traps each night. Singles, triples, not near, I mean, what? For instance, in one trap in one night, uh three weeks ago, there was twenty pigs in one trap. Um so now getting singles, doubles, so they're starting to disperse, seeing less of them. Um so we're going to take that opportunity and go ahead and start repairing some of the damage around the ag complex and. Jail, trying to level that and get it ready for uh hopefully some spring showers, get everything leveled out and green back up, looking great.
We have a plan for fixing the dirt back.
Yes, sir, so we're going to be using some of the equipment out of the at the ag center that we use on the arena, drags, rollers, things of that nature. For the larger areas, got to look, be a little more uh particular at the ag, uh but just because of sprinkler systems. But we'll be able to cover um all of. Gotta look, be a little more particular at the ag, but just cause of sprinkler systems, but we'll be able to cover all of it.
Go right ahead, Mr. Donald.
Jeff, Hawksville Road, I wrote out there, again, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it, but the west near to that's in pretty bad shape, if you had a chance to. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I have a road with the same kind of stuff, and it's not very inviting, I would tell you that. Yes, ma'am.
I need to request an executive session with the board in the mini wooden litigation. This is an inverse condemnation case from a road paving project from two thousand thirteen. Plans Council has requested mediation again, and so I need to meet with the board to go over some things.
When would you like to do that?
So we're gonna need, I think, quite a bit of time, so I would recommend either starting at one o'clock after the next board meeting on the eleventh, or at four o'clock on the twenty-fourth.
What's the board's plan?
You said, our next board meeting is February the eleventh, that's a morning meeting, so you're talking about in the afternoon after lunch?
Yeah.
Are you thinking an hour?
At least.
That works for you.
That, that would be satisfying, I think. What about, Doc?
It's good.
What about, Dr. Spire?
That's fine.
Okay. Looks like we have a man.
That's all I have.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
We need, we probably need a motion of that, so we can do that.
Okay, you want a motion to that, we can get one, I think.
Make a motion to it.
Alright, Mr. Crutchfield makes a motion.
I see.
We've got two seconds, Dr. Spire, then, Mr. Donald Pro.
Dr. Spire.
All, all approved, raise your right hand. That's the board, that's the board's action, that's what you like, Miss Jordan. Yes, ma'am, thank you. But if I got anything else, the one thing with that's on the table, anything?